I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have one announcement today, Stephen, I didn't get it on my paper about the employee.
Yeah, we're sad to report that recent town employee, Andy Busa, who was on the custodial staff, passed away over the holidays. I didn't, was not able to find out how long he'd worked with the town, but I think it was a number of years and had worked in several buildings in a custodial capacity. And the folks who worked with him that I spoke with said he was excellent at what he did. He'll be missed, so.
Thank you.
So I just extend our condolences to his family.
Thank you. And resident comments, there doesn't seem to be anyone here tonight, probably because of the weather. And we'll go on to approval of the minutes, beginning with the December 5 special meeting.
I move that we approve the December 5, 2013 special meeting minutes.
Second.
I had some, I guess some comments about form, but I guess we can speak about those later.
Excuse me.
Do you feel comfortable going ahead with these now, Mark, or do you want to postpone it to the next meeting?
Well, I don't know what we're going to do differently is the problem, but I thought that's, it's fine, we can go forward.
Just what's your concern?
Yeah, I guess the, just the form is a little bit stilted in terms of transcript or rather than telling us the gist of what went on, but I'm fine.
Okay, any changes or amendments to the minutes?
To Mark's, your comment, we have been, we've looked at some different formats and the ways of making it more narrative form than script form.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on.
Yep, I moved to accept the December 11, 2013 special meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, and December 16, regular meeting?
I approve the December 16, 2013 meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I love to approve the December 19, 2013 special meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, five to zero vote.
I love to approve the December 20, 2013 special meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. All right, thank you very much. Now, we're moving on to the casino mitigation, and right now, we're, our attorney is preparing the surrounding community designation petition. And I put together just a short slideshow to explain where we are in the process. Yeah, just a minute, please. That's okay. Stephen had, was, we have.
I printed some hard copies of this that we could look at, but I guess where they are.
Not here.
On the project.
Not here.
Yeah, it's not coming on. Yeah, might need to check that.
It takes, takes a minute.
Oh, that's, here we go. Yeah. Okay, so we're, where we are in the casino.
I think it's the middle switch has the, is the round lights, which makes it so that it's the other, the other one. Yeah.
Okay. We're in the, where we are in the casino mitigation process is where our attorney is preparing a petition for the surrounding community designation. This has to go to the Mass Gaming Commission. They are the ones that decide if the, you are not declared a surrounding community in the application process by the casino project, then you have to go to Mass Gaming Commission, and they make the decision. The original date was January 10, and the select board just received notice that there was, were given a little more room to January 13. The Mass Gaming Commission is the one that makes the designation of who is a surrounding community. And just because you're next to a casino project does not make you a surrounding community. For surrounding community status in regards to requiring mitigation agreements, that's decided by the Mass Gaming Commission. West Springfield and Long Meadow are filing petitions. There's a potential for North Hampton and Holyoke as other possible petitioners. We don't know at this time. I know that North Hampton is discussing their possibility of getting a mitigation agreement. There will be a public hearing on, or about, January 23. That could be delayed again since they delayed by three days when the petitions are due. Mass Gaming decision on surrounding community designation is to be issued by February 6. The start of negotiation period starts February 7. Without the surrounding community designation, there's no possibility of going on to arbitration. So our attorney is working very hard on this initial petition and application. Whether the designation decision can be appealed is an open question. Under state law, there's a right to appeal an administrative agency's adjudicatory decision. That's under MGLC 30A. This designation isn't adjudication, as the MGC is making a decision based on a petition and in opposition to the petition. There is certainly an argument that there could be subject to an appeal, though that's not a definitive answer, according to our attorney.
Right.
Yes.
I'm not sure disclosing our attorney's advice on something like that is to our best advantage.
Everything I'm presenting now, the attorney reviewed and agreed that this was, should for, for a presentation. The MGC considers a surrounding community petition as part of the negotiation arbitration process. If designated, upon the designation being made, the town would have 30-day window to negotiate with MGM. This 30-day window begins February 7. The arbitration begins March 11, with the arbitrator selecting March 17. The arbitration ends April 14. The Mass Gaming Commission will not be the arbitrator for the mitigation agreements. The MGC has provided some guidance and requirements on selecting an arbitrator. The parties must agree on one arbitrator. Otherwise, each side picks one arbitrator, and those two arbitrators select a third arbitrator to create a panel. The MGC has left open the possibility to adjust an arbitrator's decision as necessary. Arbitration is final and binding, subject to MGC's adjustment. So where we are in the process, I put together a little timeline, and as we saw today, that these dates can be changed. January 13, we are filing our petition for surrounding community designation, and that will be with the Mass Gaming Commission. The Mass Gaming Commission will have a public hearing on these petitions around January 23. I put a question mark, since there was a change in the date on the petition, there could be a change in the date on the January 23. February 6, MGC is targeting to decide communities which will be designated as surrounding communities. February 7, communities designated begin 30-day period to negotiate in good faith with casino project developers, which means if we are designated surrounding community starting February 7, we have the 30 days to continue our negotiation process. If we are unable to come to an agreement within those 30 days, March 11, the communities without mitigation agreements may begin the arbitration process. March 17 is the targeted day for the arbitrator to be chosen, and April 14 is the targeted day for arbitration to end. So this is just a review of where we are in the process. As we go along, some of these dates, as I say, can be changed, and also the MGC might be making a few decisions on regulations, especially when it comes to arbitration. So right now, we're, we aren't going to go into the details on our petition. It's still being worked on, and that is as confidential with the attorney at this point in time. So are there any discussion or comments in regards to casino mitigation, the petition? Yes?
I just have a couple, I guess, questions, Marie, but also comments for, mostly for the people at home. My question is that, that, you know, we've begun the process of petitioning for designation of the surrounding community, and I think people need to understand that that's because we were not designated in the MGM application that they submitted by December 31.
Yes.
Unlike some of the other surrounding towns. But the question is, is it possible that we get designated between now and, let's say, when the MGC might rule on our petition? In other words, can MGM choose to agree to, to have us be designated, I can't imagine why they'd do that, but, you know, but is it possible that they could agree to have us designated?
I, my understanding is you're designated a surrounding community in two ways. One is if you're in the application, and the application's already completed and filed, or two, if the Mass Gaming Commission. If the MGM or a casino decides to, outside the process, to agree, I don't know if they could actually change that process, but right now, I'm expecting, they could, because what they're saying when we were talking about whether it was an adjudication, is they respond to our petition. So MGM will respond to our petition between the 13th and the 23rd. And if they decide not to object to our petition, that would be one way. But again, I would still say the Mass Gaming Commission would have to make the final decision. That's just my guess.
Yeah, I think the only, the only technical point to make would be, would the Gaming Commission accept an amendment to the license application? And that's the only other way it could be done, is if MGM submitted an amendment to the portion, that section 5.1 or whatever it is of their application, and they submit a new one with us as a surrounding community. But again, highly unlikely, but I guess that's possible.
My other question, Marie, is that I think it needs to be commented, that, that the petition process is, is separate and different from anything that might go beyond that or after that, such as a mitigate, negotiating a mitigation agreement, or even going through arbitration. There are three separate processes, and the first one is the petition process, the second one is a, is a negotiating process if you're designated, and the third one would be an arbitration process if you're designated and you can't come to an agreement through negotiation.
Yeah. And if anyone's interested in the petition process, if you go on the Mass Gaming Commission's site, in November 21, they had a review of surrounding community petitions and designations. So that is an interesting point. The one thing they did say on the 21st is they consider it, even though it's three separate processes, whatever you put in your petition, if you end up in arbitration, will be part of the arbitration process. Richard?
Yeah, I thought it was an odd thing when you said there that going and binding, you could go into binding arbitration, but that they still could come in and modify that? There's a conflict of terms there, or is it my understanding is weak?
No, I think your understanding is right. I thought that was interesting, too.
Yeah.
That's something that the Mass Gaming Commission has come out saying that they will tweak it. Is that right, Stephen?
It's in the statute. And, because I remember reading the statute early on, and it basically said, you can be designated or not designated, and you can go to an arbitration award and, you know, get, or go to an arbitration here and get an award of a certain amount, but in all cases, the Mass Gaming Commission reserves the right to assess an impact fee. Like I said, I think, now, Pittsburgh is, it's a pretty small amount, but they are now going to get an impact fee from that slots parlone lemmister that we had talked about, even though they were not designated a surrounding community by the commission. So it's, it is one of those things, the Gaming Commission does reserve the right to kind of go over and above the process.
Yeah, it is, as I say, it's just an odd term to have mixed in with binding arbitration, and then you say, but if we don't like it, we can, we'll tweak it.
And I think Marie did a good job laying out, these, these steps are all conditional. You know, we, the first, the next step that is certain is submitting the petition. If we're not found to be a surrounding community, then none of the other steps really apply. If we're surrounded, found to be a surrounding community, then we go into the statutory required 30-day negotiating period. If we don't reach a mutual agreement, we go into binding arbitration, but it's not, some of these steps may never occur.
And I think what you said was important, which I didn't realize, and that's Pittsburgh, who was found not to be a surrounding community on that November 21 hearing, still MGM stepped in and got an agreement for him.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments on where we are in the process?
The only question I have is, to the board, is that if we're, if there is nothing that can be done between now and the 13th in terms of being recognized as a surrounding community, then I'm assuming that we are then no longer speaking with MGM. Because if there's nothing that can change your mind between now and the 13th, why would we be in discussions with them? I mean, I don't know if we are. I know Brandon has been going back, our attorney's been going back and forth with letters. But if we're held to that line that nothing can be done, it doesn't seem like it would be worthwhile to even talk to MGM.
I don't, since the application was printed, and it was a, it was, became evident that we were not going to be designated by MGM in their application through their relaying that information to us, there have been correspondence, mostly MGM sending correspondence to us for a variety of reasons, and us, and our attorneys replying in kind. Other than, I mean, I would say that there would be non-meaningful communication, if any. There's no plans to have any communication, there's no planned meetings or negotiations or anything, I don't think. I think you assessed it correctly, Paul, there really is not much that will be gained by talking between now and here, in the submitting the petition. However, if MGM has a change of heart and says they want to meet and discuss it, you know, we're always open to that, but in all likelihood, we're just heading through the designation process.
Mark?
Yeah, not to open this up to attorney-client communications, but in a letter we sent to MGM, didn't we, our last letter, or I don't know if it's the last letter, but didn't we invite them to meet with us to discuss, I mean, so in theory, we still have an open offer with MGM to begin to discuss, I don't know if it's designation at this point or mitigation, but discuss something. I think it would be both. So potentially, that could still be happening. That was the purpose of my question about, you know, can something happen, because?
Well, if MGM changes its mind, of course, that can happen.
If there comes, if they decide to negotiate with us an agreement, they can always respond by, as we talked just now, not supporting our petition as being a surrounding community instead of objecting to it.
Right.
Alex?
We had a discussion at the last meet, and I think it was the last, I don't think I missed, we didn't have any meetings while I was gone last week, about who the board's spokesperson was going to be. And I'm not, and I know we've discussed this many times as a board, and I'm not sure we've ever come to a outright decision on it. I felt like we had a consensus, but then I kind of feel like we haven't gotten a consensus. So I would like to make a motion that we have the law firm that we hired, Murphy Hess, as our spokesperson in negotiations with MGM on the surrounding community agreement.
And I guess what we got hung up with last time is, what is a spokesman? Is the spokesman the only one who communicates with MGM? Or are we talking about a spokesman as the, the person that negotiates the actual agreement?
I would say both. I mean, this is what we've been discussing, and, and it sounds like maybe there's a difference of opinion on it, but, you know, one of the things I discussed last time was the, you know, it being a bad idea to have Stephen speaking to lawyers for the other side. You know, it's, once the attorneys are involved, really, the negotiation should be lawyer, lawyer. And again, I thought we had consensus on that, but then I'm not sure we really do.
On that specific point, we do. Well, I know the board does, but that, and on that specific point, that is what has actually, with one minor exception regarding scheduling, not to be repeated, learned my lesson, thank you for bringing it up again. That has, is in fact what's been happening. In fact, the last correspondence we got from MGM, which was not from their attorneys, went directly to our attorney, so I'm sure that makes people feel more comfortable.
I don't, I don't think it's a point of comfort. I don't think it's a point of comfort. I think it's a point of understanding at this point, because we're, now we're moving into a much more formalized process. And I, I'm not going to talk for Alex, but I think that was what he was after. I think that was my general feelings at the last meeting, and it doesn't talk against anybody, it just says, okay, he is going to be the representative. You know, and we filter everything through them, period. And, and I think we're rapidly approaching, well, we are at the point now where we're turning to attorneys. The informal is all over with, and we're, we're well down the road, so. Is that what the point that you're after, Alex?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought that was it. I think that's what it is, and it, it has changed now, and I think everybody understands that.
Well, I think it's, it's just to confirm or to clarify, it has been that way for some time.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the conversations have been, I mean, there's been almost no free-form conversation, you know, back and forth, haggling over the conference table, it's been letters and correspondence, so I mean, and that's all gone through the law firm.
Right.
I mean, the reason why I bring this up is because I think you, Stephen, sent an email saying, well, we didn't agree at the last meeting that the attorney was going to be the spokesperson. So that's, that's where the confusion comes up.
And I guess there's, there's spokesperson in terms of handling media contacts, and then there is, you know, representative in the business of the surrounding community agreement negotiations. And I 100% agree that our attorneys should be leading us and being our representatives in the negotiation of the business of the surrounding community agreement. I, I don't, if I've conveyed any kind of disagreement with that point, I apologize. In terms of spokesperson, you know, conveying, you know, what's happening to the public and handling media inquiries, that's something as I set forth before, that myself, the chair, Brandon, kind of, you know, in a team fashion have been working, but to some extent, there's been a need for accessibility, and I've been able to provide that. And I quite frankly think it's actually, it's working well. And I, I'm actually pleased with how we've, not only the board, but the town organization, the attorneys have really, I think, synced up well together, and I think we've done a good job getting us to this point in the process.
So I guess I, I'd just like to ask Alex, you know, you wanted, you came here looking for something, and?
Well, I made a motion, so, I mean, if there's no second, then?
Well, I'll second because I have a question. Yeah, I'm sorry. We should have seconded just to get in a discussion. We were, we were procedurally out of line.
And I, I guess my question in regards to your motion before you, is spokesman, I think I'm, when you want to say negotiator or counsel, but there's been so many motions in regards to spokesman, I'm sure about that word, it's?
Well, I think what I said to a spokesperson in our negotiations with MGM, I agree, that's different from spokesperson with respect to speaking to the media for the board. I mean, that's something we could take up separately. But, I mean, I, it's just, I, my experience, my brief experience on this board is where there's been ambiguity that, you know, it leads to misunderstandings, and, and that's why I made the motion.
Okay, so it's been seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I guess my, I mean, I just wrote down, Alex, something that, I tried to paraphrase it, but I, that, that the motion was that we have only one spokesperson in our negotiation with MGM, and that that spokesperson be our attorney. Is that what you were saying?
Yes, Murphy Hess.
Right, 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 right. Okay, but, fine, that I, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make sure that we?
And did you, I'm just catching Jackie up on Paul seconding the motion. Did you say that includes media inquiries?
No.
Or just, just representative in negotiations?
Negotiation. I mean, I think we should discuss the media issue. I mean, because, you know, we, I don't think we've ever made a decision on who is speaking for the board with respect to the media.
So let's stick to this motion now.
Sure, sure.
Any further discussion or comments? The only question I would have is, I would like to see the attorney, we're putting the negotiations in the hands of the attorney, and the attorney might decide, he's going to say something, he might decide, a presentation will be done by someone in his team, or I think we have to also follow whatever our counsel says. Most likely, he's going to say it's going to be him during the negotiations. But I'm not asking you to change your motion, he will come forward and tell the, the board in regards to what he might want.
We hired Brandon, we hired Murphy Hess, and so forth, so I think we're just the firm.
Right, yes.
But should it be, but from Marie's point, should it be the firm or their designate? Because they may designate one of our consultants to discuss, I don't, can't imagine why, but they might, who knows who they might designate to talk to MGM about something.
Well, to your point, I would say I would feel comfortable with our attorneys, and that they're designate.
Then, that's fine.
That's just me, I would feel more comfortable with them.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Now, moving on to green?
Well, and to follow my point, I mean, I think we ought to discuss who's going to be speaking for the board to the media. You know, I feel like de facto, it's been sometimes you, sometimes it's been Stephen, and, you know, after having been rebuked by you for speaking to the media, not about the surrounding community agreement, but other topics relating to the casino issue as not speaking for the board, it's, it's a little strange that we've had other members who have explicitly spoken for the board without that authorization. I just think we ought to be on the same page on that. And so I would make a motion that any press releases or statements to the press be approved by the select board on the subject of the surrounding community agreement with MGM.
Second.
And now, we're ready for discussion.
Yeah, we'll second it for discussion, but it may be, I can't see how that can work out with the fact of the timeliness of press releases and the obligations that we have to schedule meetings. Can you help me through that? Because I don't?
I can't help you through that, because I agree with you that, that, you know, there are times when a response is needed in a timely manner that doesn't meet with a 48-hour advance notice for the select board coming together to vote on a unified response. I think we have to?
Can you give an example? I'm just saying, because that, you know, to Alex's point is that, you know, I've seen press releases after they've gone out, and, and things like that. We all have, I mean, so it's not, so what's an example of what's so pressing that we can't wait?
I think what's pressing, I think what's pressing that can't wait is that there's a story that comes out, whether it's a release by MGM, and I'm not going to give specific examples, but I think there, there have that I could cite, that, about MGM releasing a letter or stating a letter, and I think it's important that a balanced article be written as opposed to one that says, the town of Long Meadow had no comment, or couldn't make a comment because they couldn't, couldn't comment for 48 hours. I think if MGM's going to put down, and I think we've seen that MGM's going to run this negotiation somewhat through press releases, because they, they've seemed to have released all of their letters to us, to the press simultaneously with us getting them, that I think it's meaningful for us to be able to go back to when the press tries to publish these letters, that there be a comment from some official of the town of Long Meadow, that although it may not be ideally perfectly suited to five members of the select board, it represents to some degree the side of, of the town. And to, you know, I can't see us saying, we'll let them pu- And to, you know, I, I can't see us saying, we'll let them publish one-sided articles, and that's really what's going to happen.
And it also looks poorly, I think, when they say, a comment was requested and there was no comment, and that almost becomes a comment. I think when we had this discussion before, and you actually had to leave early, the decision was that if anytime anyone feels that it's important to speak to the press, that they contact the attorney with the talking points, the talking points are reviewed with the attorney, once they're approved by the attorney, then the person could speak. And I think that I've been doing that, and I believe Stephen has been speaking to our attorney directly, and when we had this discussion before, you said you felt uncomfortable telling select board members that they had to be muzzled on a certain, any topic, but I think the most important thing is we stick to the talking point issues, that you do go through the attorney and make sure that this is what is, is the statement or of the town.
Can I, I just want to respond, I didn't, I said I was uncomfortable, or not in favor of muzzling a, a select board member for their opinion, because that's what happened a couple of years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And the issue is that, you know, Mr. Grant has had his opinion, and there were members of this board that had wanted to say, well, you're going to take those opinions away. This is different, this is speaking, I don't think, I don't think Alex ever represented himself, other than as a select board member, speaking for the board. And I could be wrong, I didn't see every letter he wrote, but I don't believe he represented himself, or as speaking for the board or selectman. I think that, what the issue is, is, A, it's, first of all, it's a communication issue. I, I don't, I haven't seen one response that said, we got to respond today, or we're going to look bad if we don't respond. I just, I'm looking for that example of, tell me why it's so important to not understand what's going, going out to the media when we're getting it after the fact, or viewing it on TV or radio when we understand that a, a release was made. And I, I guess, you know, does that mean if someone contacts Alex and says, we want your comment, can Alex then not comment? Is that what we're saying? I mean, or we're just, I, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something of why it's important to respond immediately to something just because the media calls. And I think we've had this discussion, when we were so concerned about the media, and, you know, and, and I made a comment, and I think I've been fairly accurate in that, my descriptor, but I just, I think that, you know, the, the issue is, we don't, I don't think there's anything that's been facing the board that said, you had to get your response out today, or we're going to look really bad.
Well, I think that
Because it doesn't mean that it's going to be published.
I don't think it, I don't think it breaks down that clea, let me, if I may?
You already have.
First of all, I mean, there's a, a public relations role of the town manager under the charter, and generally speaking, this is why communities have town managers
Is that in the, I've never seen
Handle these kinds of, it's a coordinated public information campaign about town business. And this is why, this is why most communities ha, have professional management to be able to be the spokesperson for the town on things. I guess I would ask, well, to answer your question, Paul, if they call in the afternoon preparing to do a story for 6:00 PM, they're going to run the story whether we comment or not, and as Mark said, we have an important story to tell as well, and we want to make sure that the stories are balanced with the town's perspective. I guess I would ask, has there been an issue with what has been reported or how the stories have gone? Because if there's been an issue with what has been said, I certainly would take responsibility for that, but if it's an issue that I'm the one doing the talking, then I'd, I'd want to understand that a little better.
But my only issue is that seeing press releases or hearing about things by watching a newscast and so forth versus getting it before it's even sent out. And, you know, we, we actually created somewhat of a little policy that said, or so, a policy that said, we want to see press releases for any department before they're sent out for an issue that we had over the summertime, I believe.
Right.
So why, why all of a sudden did that change? So, we, we get a press release about the police notifying about a parking ban, but we don't get prior notification of a press release going out for something that is speaking on behalf of the board? And, and I still am trying to find why it's important to respond that quickly. I understand they're going to do a story, if there's no comment in it, you know, and you don't even know what's going to be printed, we can't even determine what's going to be printed by the time a release is sent out, if that's actually going to be taken and printed, we don't know that, obviously. They can take, they can interview you for an hour and put in seven words, for example. I mean, we know that's happened in the past as well. So they're going to tailor your release to whatever, or statements to whatever their story, fits their story. So, I'm just looking for that example that said, we had to respond today, or we're, we're going to look really bad, or it's going to hurt our negoti, really, it has nothing to do with negotiations, it's more just a
Well, it's trying to keep the public informed as to what's happening, and so the, the, the public, consumers of the news, understand the complexity and nuance of the issues we've been grappling with for many months. And I guess, I'd be looking for, again, if, if I hear what you're saying, Paul, and I, and if I, if I'm not hearing you correctly, I want to make sure I do, if I'm hearing, if I hear you, it's the timing of when you all are finding out about when there's going to be a story, because it's, to, to my knowledge, press rele, like, formalized press releases that have been done, I thought, had some vetting with the board each time we did them, it's possible that some did not. I mean, in, in all, in all media relations, and I know you, you know this, there is a timeliness factor in being ti, in, you know, when you release information and how you release is very important when you're trying to convey something, and in our case, we're trying to convey, like I said, an education about a complex issue. But if, if the issue, is the issue when you guys are finding out about it?
For me, if that's one of the issues, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and I, and certainly, that's, yeah, as someone who has been doing the bulk of the speaking with the media, that's on me, and I, I could certainly do a better job of saying, hey, just so you know, there's a story going to be on the news tonight, you know, here's, here's what I said.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I mean, I guess, you know, part of the concern I have is that, you know, this is a particularly sensitive time. I mean, this is, and, and every time I've, and, I've, I've been asked to comment about the, the surrounding community negotiations, I've refrained from doing that because I don't see any advantage in it at this point, to talk about the numbers, and to use an example, when we put the, the terms of, of a counteroffer, or a draft counteroffer on the board, that has hurt us. That was bad.
That's not, has nothing to do with
No, it was, you were talking about communications with the media, that was a communication with the media. And, you know, there was another comment about, well, I'm hoping that we're, you know, I expect to have an agreement by January, you know, again, it's sort of like, you know, going into a used car dealership and saying, you know, I really want to buy this car today, you know, that's, you know, again, it's, there's no advantage in it. And I guess part of the issue then is, you know, if, if we're not going to approve it, then does that leave it open to any select board member to speak for the board? I mean, because that's the point that you've made, about who's speaking for the board and who's not, I mean, because I, I think to this point, we haven't designated anybody.
Well, I think there's, there's two points I want to make. One is in regards to our open meeting and what we presented in open meeting, that wasn't given to, that was not a presentation for the press, that's what we required to do in open meeting. And in regards to saying, we want to have an agreement by January 1st, that statement, I don't feel hurts us, it says it means that we're willing to negotiate in good faith, and we're in the middle, we're still agreeing to negotiate. Anything that has been presented has gone through the attorneys, through the attorney approval. Now, if, the question now is, do we designate one person to be our spokesman, and if so, who that spokesman is? If you decide you are only going to decide, this whole board's going to vote on every single comment that leaves, and every single press release, I think that that would be difficult. I think it's better to let our attorney decide how, what will be released, and when it's going to be released. I agree with Paul, it should, we should be informed as soon as something's going out.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, the, the concept that we can, that people have to speak for the board rather than themselves, I think is flawed. I think five people here, it's, it's a, you know, unless there's a vote at the select board, and I only know of one time we've done that with regard to the casino issue, and that was a, a letter that went to the reminder, and to the, and to the Long Meadow News, that, that we don't, you know, for the most part, speak as, as a group, we speak as individuals, and I think, you know, so, the question is, do, does somebody speak as the board? It can't be done, because even if we designate me, or Marie, or Paul, or anybody to speak for the board without getting together with the board, either in a session that, that needs 48 hours advance notice, or a session that, that is serial communication that violates the open meeting law, it's not going to happen. That's number one. The second thing is, I think the, the concept of this is, is moot anyway, because practically, our vote is unenforceable, as our, our attorney told us back in, I think it was October or November, when we were first talking about open meeting laws, and I think, Alex, it was you, who said, what about somebody who breaks the confidence of a, it was a different discussion, but breaks the confidence of a, of a executive session? He'd say, well, I'd hope people wouldn't do that, but there's absolutely nothing you can do even about that. And so if we can't enforce executive session, how would we possibly enforce a spokesperson kind, kind of rule? So I, you know, I, I think we've got to trust that we've got five intelligent people on the select board here, who are, who will look out for the best interest of the town, will think before they, they react, but will react appropriately in the best interest of the town. I think we should vote against the motion.
Okay, any other comments on the motion? Okay, and the motion again is?
To have all press releases or statements to the press have to be approved by the select board with respect to the surrounding community agreement with MGM.
Okay, now, Richard?
Yeah, I, I have, I'll repeat my comment, I, I don't think, I know your angle, and I understand your point, but I think there's been enough discussion here that it's almost impossible to do because of the way we're set up. And I think Mark just echoed that again, too, it's just the way our laws are in the open meeting law, that it's, it's very difficult.
Well, I think, I mean, it's, I mean, I guess if, if people are going to speak on the subject of offers and counteroffers, and again, I don't think there's any advantage in that.
Well, no, no, I agree, but that's the negotiation, that's our lawyer.
But if that's, but if that's what somebody was, then, then whoever's going to say it ought to say that they're not speaking for the board, and they're speaking as an individual.
Mm-hmm. But, but your point is negotiation, that's not the issue.
No, no, I, I'm, I'm talking about press. But I guess part of my point is, part of what, part, part of the statements you're making to the public is part of the negotiation. Believe me, that news report about those posters will be part of the negotiation, it will be an exhibit, it will, you know, it's already been referenced by MGM, so that's part of the conversation. So, I mean, that, that's what makes those comments so important.
Right, individual comments and individual discussions with the media by all board members, MGM will, I'm sure, bring into the dialogue in terms of our fairness and reasonableness, that is a fact, you are correct.
Right.
The only thing I'll say, and this is not to sound defensive, but we, the board, those posters were hung up prior to the media arriving, I was not aware that the media was going to be attending that board, I mean, that's a first for me since I've been here, beyond the LCTV, you know, the, the TV channels being here for that meeting was, I don't know, who knew they were going to be here, but I certainly didn't, and perhaps would have thought differently of it. I think it was a tool for the board to consider. I guess the other thing I'll say is, there's, speaking on, in terms of the spokesperson on behalf of the board, the way I look at it is, as town manager, I am a spokesperson on behalf of the town. Certainly, that, certainly that extends to the town organization, but it can be taken more broadly, and I, again, I, I'm, it's not clear to me if the issue is that I'm the person doing the talking, or what has been said has been in error, and I guess I just want some more guidance. After the vote, I'd just like some more guidance, and people can talk to me offline about it as well.
Richard?
Yeah, I, I'm still having a trouble grasping this, because I think we've got too many things mixing.
Yeah.
We've already, we've already resolved the issue on the negotiation, and the lawyer's going to be that. Now we're talking about just press releases only, and, and I think we've already, Mark has already said it's impossible, that, because if you get a call, you're going to talk to the press. Everybody's going to take any hope they're going to use good judgment and all. I still think the official press releases have to, have to come from our central point of government, because that's the focal point of all of our discussions, that one individual's here, and one individual's with all the lawyer's comments, and, and this type, and I, and, but you're not going to be negotiating, so it's just general press releases at this point. And if, and if I'm wrong, and somebody's going to have to correct me, but that, I'm seeing it that narrowly defined that we've already taken the negotiation and put it over here, so now we're talking about general press releases, and I think that, that should rest back with the town manager for that general type of request.
So, are we ready for a vote?
I, I, I just think, you know, you're looking at me, so you want to, you want
No, it's just, I'm just saying.
I don't know, I thought you were just
No. No, it's just a blank stare.
Just a blank stare, okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
I interpreted that. Sorry, Marie, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
I would, I, I, yeah.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay. Any other comments on
You just announced the results.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Three in favor?
No.
I mean, three opposed, and two in favor. It's Mark. So the motion does not pass. Any other comments on surrounding, casino mitigation, surrounding community designation petition? And in the future, if there's going to be any motions that you're planning on bringing forward, really should tell me, so I can make a more detailed agenda. I'm a little concerned about bringing these up in the middle of the meeting.
Right, I just may, I'd just like to make sure it's clear amongst, amongst my, myself and the rest of the board members, that this does not channel any negotiation to the media, that each member on this board is, still can communicate at will with the freedom of the press, but that we're talking about the official press releases from our community generating them, is that correct?
Yes.
I, I just want to make sure that's going.
But I think we did informally discuss that if there's any time, there's going to be an interview to please communicate with the attorney before any discussion. All right, anything else in regards to this? All right, moving on to Green Communities' report. We are now designated a Green Community, that was a lot of work back and forth, so, and I think the new high school made it a little more complicated than we realized.
Establishing the baseline, certainly, yes. This is just an, an update, we did, we were designated, which was a tremendous victory for the town organization, not only in the accomplishment of earning the designation, but also what it means for us moving forward to reducing our energy consumption and cost. We are eligible for a $155,000 grant, that grant, I believe, is one-time, but I think there are additional opportunities for funding down the line. And the grant is due the 29th of January, so kind of a tight timeline, and you have to do, complete the work, I believe, within a year. And I, I did include the grant application guidance just for your edification, so you understand what we're looking at. And then I also included in the packet, the, it's called the ERP, the Energy Reduction Plan, this is what we submitted to the Department of, the DOER, whatever that stands, Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, to, and this is what was approved. And the reason why I refer you to it is there are projects that are listed here in the ERP that are things that we intend to do to achieve that 20% reduction in energy consumption. And obviously, we want to look at using the 150, or we want to look at, the DOER wants us to take that $155,000 and apply it to a project that'll help further that goal. There are some eligibility requirements that make it not as easy a choice on certain things, but I just want to give the board an update that, as we evaluate that list of projects, the, the priorities that we have kind of internally are, the value of the energy reduction, the necessity of the improvement, if it's a system that needs to be replaced in the existing building, or, you know, something like that, the, the savings that are achieved, and then how those savings can be leveraged to do additional energy efficiency work on, you know, in the furtherance of our ERP. So, we have a few options we're kicking around right now, but as it, before the grant gets submitted, I just wanted to give you an update as to what our thought process is for that.
So it's not clear cut on how you choose your projects?
No, I mean, it's not clear, I mean, we've, like I said, we're looking to, to leverage $155,000 to either the, to the greatest impact in terms of energy savings, or possible, you know, overall cost savings to the town. One of the things that's been talked about is purchasing the streetlights. I did observe that, another community I did observe that another community had done that with their grants when they were accepted, and I reached out to that community to find out how that experience was. There are boiler replacements that may be needed in town buildings, so we're just trying to figure out what's, what do we get the biggest bang for our buck on the grant, but also, how do we make sure it's not just a one-off project where once we've done the work and spent the 155, we're not getting anything back in terms of money that can be leveraged to achieve greater savings?
You mentioned something when we were speaking before, which I didn't realize, and that is the money, let's say you, you take the grant, 155, and we put it in something and we save $20,000. Well, that $20,000 is then supposed to be taken to another project to, for further savings. And so that gets complicated when we're talking about school budget and town budget.
Nothing obligates us to save that 20,000, take that $20,000 in savings and do anything with it.
Oh, it doesn't. I thought part of the grant was you had to do it.
Steven's comment is, if, if we spend $155,000 on a project that saves $20,000 in energy costs, might we then want to say, now we've got $20,000 a year to spend on other energy reduction projects? Or something, in other words, leverage that money, but ideally, 155,000 will save even more than $20,000, and therefore, it's really a perpetuating kind of thing.
You're compounding the savings.
Right, there's no requirement that we do it.
There's no requirement that we put it back in.
Well, we are required to advance the ERP. I mean, we are required to, to advance our goals that we, that are the reason why we're getting this grant. And all those things have costs associated with them, so you want to have it be as budget neutral as possible. And this is something, when we were, when I was in Lancaster, we replaced the boilers in City Hall with a grant, with a stimulus grant at the time, and we were, we saved, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in natural gas costs, and we took a substantial portion of that, and then the following year did, replaced fluorescent lighting that was outdated. And then we took the savings from those electricity bills and turned them into motion sensors. I mean, we didn't have to budget additional money, and so not only did we get the save, we got the continued savings on the gas bills, but for essentially no charge, we got the additional saving of the, on the energy bills, and it, again, it just keeps compounding going forward, and that's, that's what we want to get to with this first project.
Is there any consideration on the carbon footprinting and all that in this, or are we just after just raw money?
It's reduction, well, yes, I mean, when you reduce your energy consumption, your MMBTU's consumed, you do lower your, you do shrink your carbon footprint.
Yeah, but some of the modifications, though, don't support that theory. I'm saying, are we really given the full depth? Because there's a lot of energy systems that are counterproductive even though they save you here. It's the fact that the environment was killed over here in the manufacturing of the device. It's, it's bigger than just what's in front of you. So, I will take it that there's very little consideration for the whole arena, it's just for savings then.
Well, no, I mean, in terms of what we'd apply for, there is some eligibility things that are pretty detailed in the, in the grant. That's the threshold, is what green communities will pay for. And then within that, and all of those things are about reducing greenhouse gas emissions and things like that. That's, I mean, that's the overall goal of the program, obviously.
So, Stephen, you're, the, the grant is due January 29th, right? And so today is January 6th, and we're being told that you have some selection criteria. You've talked about three of them. You have a whole bunch of projects, but I guess the question is, at what point might the select board be able to weigh in on this? Because we have one scheduled meeting between now and January 29th, which is the 20th, two weeks from today. And I'm just concerned that, you know, given the nature of the select board discussions in the past, that, that we're going to end up with a, a long discussion and not be able to meet, or have, to have five special meetings in order to meet in time to decide what, how to go forward. And my sense is that, that by January 29th, not only do we have to know what we're applying for, but we have to have a pretty good write-up about that project as well, not just the, here's the kinds of things we're thinking about doing. And so the question is, you know, what's the process going forward so that we can get something and, and have a project that we all agree is the right, the right project or the better project to submit on January 29th?
Well, I submit this information to you now, so in case, you know, you want to provide feedback to me as we go, but, you know, there's a substantial amount of work that's already gone into this, so when we talk about writing up the projects and, you know, once, once we, once we internally coalesce around what we think are good options, we can certainly present those, and the process of creating the grant application, I mean, it is, there is, it's not an unsubstantial amount of work to do the grant application, but we already know a lot about each of the individual projects. So, you know, if there's something that you feel strongly about, certainly feel free to, you know, contact me about it, but I, the way I see this going is like, how, is that we will do this at staff level and make a recommendation to the board, or we can make a couple of recommendations to the board.
If you're concerned about timing, we could always have a, an extra meeting in there. I was going to ask the board what days they're comfortable with if we need extra meetings in the next month. Paul?
Yeah, you, Mark said, you know, something similar, you did it, I think your words were, you're kicking around a few things. And I looked at the, they're not, that's not in here, right? The list of projects that you're considering, it's in here?
Yeah, the ERP is attached.
See, that's where I couldn't, okay.
It's a table.
Let's see, the summary of energy users, baseline, there's a graph.
This page is 16 and 17 on my hard copy. The title is Table 4, Actual Estimated Savings from Energy Conservation Measures Implemented Anticipated. So, there's a log here of some things that have already been done.
Okay, so these are, these are your potential projects?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I just...
And it is from this list that we will be looking. I guess I should have been clear about that point.
No, it just, there was, the title said estimated savings, I didn't realize, so you, you've already, the group has already calculated what these would be, so now it's just a matter of applying that 155 to whatever one's...
See which ones of these are eligible under the grant, because not everything may be, and then spend some time just thinking about, well, what do we get if we do this? You know, what, where does the savings accrue? How do we get the opportunity to gather some of that savings to continue the rest of these projects?
And I take it, this is, this is sort of like the dog, police dog, the select board has to approve because it's a grant application?
Uh, correct, yes. Or you could just designate me to do it. It really, it really isn't clear, I mean, it's, it's the, if you look at the grant application, page three, certification of application. So, the board, technically, the board should approve, should approve the application, but you can just designate me to apply and save the meeting. Certainly, like I said, the, what, the range of things we're going to be looking at is already known.
All right, any other comments on this? Mark?
I guess my only comments are, I'm, I'm looking through this list, and, and the first third of it or more all says it's either been implemented or is being implemented. Is that right?
Some of that, yeah.
So...
The baseline is fiscal year 2011.
Right, so, but, then I must be, because there are things that are, seem to me not here that I thought would have been on a list, like programmable things for the, for the football field lights that cause our, our, a significant increase in our peak energy billing, you know, which isn't $155,000. I mean, it's much less expensive than that, but it has a much bigger impact because it, it throws off our peak energy usage for the, for the entire month for every one of the towns, the towns' things. And so I guess my question is, if, and, and that's what I guess initiated my discussion here, is, you know, if we're aware of projects, then I guess it's behooving on a, behooving of us to let you know what those projects are before the, this town staff committee gets, gets too involved and we end up not including some things that we might want to see included, I guess. Is that, I mean, is that a fair statement?
It's a fair statement. I don't know if that helps us get to our grant application any faster, but, you know, the, they're...
Well, but if we didn't consider a project that may have a significant impact on the towns...
But the research for the best way to, to get to our goals was done by, I think there was a study done in 2010 that, that a lot of these, a lot of these things that were, that have already been done were identified in a, I haven't seen it, but from what I understand, our building department, or our, our buildings and maintenance department has been using it as kind of a guidebook for implementing measures, you know, on an ongoing basis. So, the bulk of, I mean, I, I'd hate to pull a project out of the air now and try and create the backup and put it in the context of the overall town when all of that work for all these, for this list of projects that we'll be lucky to get to as it is, is already done.
Well, I hear you, but obviously, I'm not making up this football field light system.
No, I understand that.
I mean, you know, we, I thought that was well-understood by our, our systems engineers that, you know, every time somebody flips on the lights of the football field, if they, if they flip it on quickly and, and crank those things up, the, the amperage usage peaks so high that that peak then becomes the, the rate at which the entire town is charged for an entire month. And it makes a whole lot of sense to ramp that thing up slowly with a computer-controlled system. And, and yet, we get, you know, I'm, I'm sure the people turning on the football field lights don't understand that. Now, I happened to have gone through that as part of a, what I thought was a Womiko Energy audit of the town, but if that didn't make this list, then I question the validity of the list, very honestly, because that was, that was, that came in as one of the highest returns for the small amount of dollars it was for computer control on the lights, and I know it hasn't been done.
Not as part of the high school project?
What?
Not as part of this project?
It was, it had nothing to do with this because it was the football field, you know, and, and so, you know, my question would be, what else was missed? Now, if I'm wrong on that, please ask the right people.
I don't think we need to ask it like that, though. I think we can say that we have a good list of projects that will achieve energy, that are all needs that will also achieve energy savings, and if one isn't on here, I would hesitate to throw out the whole list, Mark.
And I'm not suggesting to throw out the whole list. What I'm suggesting to do is to make sure that we didn't have any other emissions that, you know, for $85,000 or $55,000, we can save the town $55,000 a month for every month the lights are turned on on the football field. That was the kind of return this was. It had a 100% return on investment on a monthly basis. You know, and why we haven't done it is because we hadn't come up with the $55,000, so...
So, if you could get back to us and let us know why that wasn't on, and I guess I had a question, and that was, I remember when this was first talked about green communities, at the presentation, they talked about the tennis lights. And I see that's not on there. So, anyone, anything else that anyone has a question on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused. He keeps saying about this big list. Am I correct, there's only about nine projects on here that are in consideration? All the others seem to have been installed. Is that correct? On page 16 and 17? And, and by the way, Mark, you're absolutely correct. That, that has been talked about numerous times. I can't imagine it's not on this list.
13, Richard.
That, that control is so basic in, in energy management, because they're just throwing one big switch and all the lights come on at one time, and there should be staging banks and allow that load to, to equalize before you hit it with the next peak.
And Mark, knowing how you save everything, you probably have that original...
I'm sure I do.
From years ago? If you could find that, just send it to Steven.
We actually have that information when we did, when we went and bid our electric purchase out. I think it was the Constellation at the time, and that was one of the things that popped up at it, is that, that's, you know, where they, well, that was actually one of their suggestions way back then, that, you know, we had an issue with that, because it retroactively, as Mark says, go back, goes back and ups the, the surcharge on, from day one.
It takes the whole month.
Yeah.
And, and it just takes an instantaneous...
So, I, I know we have that information somewhere because we bid that out with Constellation.
When you and I talked about, that was the first I'd heard of it, and...
Oh, yeah, it hadn't been discussed since you got the town.
There's hundreds of dollars of projects here, though.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I get it, I get it, but I'm just saying that if there's a, a project with a higher rate of return, we ought to, I'm not saying we got to do it, but we ought to consider it.
No, I, I agree. The answer to the question, and I, I, why is it on the list? I don't know. All I know is what I was hearing from the team that was putting the list together, that there was back, backup or background behind all of these things that we were feeding forward, and we tried to make it as higher priority and getting the greatest energy savings gain to achieve the 20% goal.
And Alex?
I just had a question. Mark, this thing about the football field lights, how long ago was this?
When it was first identified, a while ago.
Were you on capital planning then, or?
It's at least...
No, I wasn't, no.
So, so tell me, how, how can years go by where we don't take on a project that has 100% return in a monthly basis?
Because it was, it was involved with the school project, that, that, we couldn't make changes there while the electrical system was down here. I mean, there's, it's not a...
Technical.
They're technical, and they're, you know, it was a high priority project in terms of the desire to do it. It was identified pretty early on, then there were discussions about, you know, are we going to change the lighting system anyway, so we go from whatever we got out there, you know, which isn't incandescent, but it's sodium vapor or something, to LED, you know, you just change out the whole lighting. In other words, can you make a lot more out of it than just changing the controller from a, and, and it is a computer-controlled system that has to, you got to outfit your, your whole system. It's not a, you know, call in the electrician and he'll do it tomorrow.
I mean, not to get technical, but the, the purpose of the list was to achieve a savings in, in energy units, not in...
Costs.
Costs.
Correct.
And the same number of energy units gets consumed, no matter when the lights get flipped on, and, for the most part.
So, it's something we might want to consider.
Yeah, but that, don't, don't get into that argument, because that's, that's a total false assumption on power.
It's the assumption that gets us the grant.
No, 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 no. Believe, believe me, you're, you're, you're not talking apples, and apples here. It's the peak. You pay for that peak because the power company says...
But you're not consuming more kilowatt hours.
Right, you're not consuming anymore.
This is an energy consumption...
This is kilowatt hours, this isn't a billing issue.
Not a cost savings.
Correct.
That may be one of the reasons why it's not on here, because you don't...
And you know what? Now, in retrospect, you're probably right.
But if, we should be doing it anyway. Forget the green community thing, we should be doing it anyway. I agree. But it is, it is achieve savings of, to your, back to your original point about carbon footprint. The goal is to save energy units, which is a carbon footprint issue.
All right, anything else?
I don't think you've got enough time.
Okay. Well, maybe we will look at a special meeting for this.
I guess, Marie, I'm, I'm concerned that, that we're moving forward with this based on a, without a, a process other than our staff is going to come forward and, and, and propose a project or two, or, I don't know, or three, or whatever the $155,000 will support, because I know that there were, certainly the people who promoted the green energy program were looking very strongly at the tennis courts as a potential project, as part of how we could pay for the tennis courts. And in fact, that was mentioned last year when the tennis court renovation came up to the annual town meeting for, for capital improvements. It was, we're going to do the courts now, and we're going to worry about the, the lights in a future year, and hopefully we'll have a green energy designation to do it by then.
The tennis courts, as you know, have been included in CPA funding. Funds have been set aside in successive years for, of the CPA to fund the courts, and my understanding is that we've applied for the last tranche of funds to do that, and so I think that project is on a funding stream that is, was set, quite frankly, because we didn't want to have the redo of the courts, which was a priority, be dependent on the screen community designation.
You might want to check that, then get back to us on that, to make sure the lights are included in the, the project. And so what we'll do is we'll talk about maybe a special meeting as you get narrowed down into what your projects are. All right, moving on to new business, we're talking about setting a date for the annual meeting, and there was something I did want to bring up with this, and that is, I think one of the ways to get more people involved at a town meeting is to have it on a Saturday afternoon instead of an evening. I know it's very hard for a lot of people to get out on evenings. And this list, I'm not sure if, I know it says tentative date, and I'm not sure if now's the time to talk about that, if we have to make a decision on that now, because we're coming up with one, we're setting the warrant and everything else.
Madam Chair, one of the big drivers of that is when the gymnasium is available, because it's, that is where town meeting happens, and my understanding is that the moderator does not, you know, the auditorium is not a suitable replacement, the gymnasium, and so, the school books out the gym.
Well, we could always see if it's available on a Saturday afternoon. When do we have to decide on the deadline for the annual town meeting? In other words, does it have to be done tonight?
I think it was, I, I'll be honest with you, I, I think it is somewhat time-sensitive. I can't answer you when we need to set, but I mean, I think if you back out of the annual town meeting versus, you know, for deadlines for getting articles submitted, approved by the board, published, all that stuff.
I'd like to be able to set this aside and see if we can look at a Saturday afternoon. I think that would be a real game changer in regards to the amount of people that can come and participate. Paul?
I disagree with you, because I don't think it's the timing of the town meeting, because I think it's what's on at town meeting. Historically, when there's not a lot of issues, you won't have a lot of people at town meeting. When there's an issue, whether it's a, a school building being on the, on the town meeting, this high school, then you'll have people turn out. I don't think it has anything to do with the day, because as many people as you might help by coming out on a Saturday, you'll hurt with parents, with activities for kids. You're just at a different demographic on a Saturday. Theoretically, I don't, I, I think, you know, that it's everybody's responsibility to get to town meeting. I don't think having a meeting at seven o'clock at night is a deterrent for anybody to come out to it, and I, I think that having it on a Saturday, you know, we've traditionally, and we've had these discussions about when the warrants get placed, and, you know, it's, people know it's the, the second Tuesday in May, and this is when we're going to have it, and here's when it's going to be. I, I don't, you know, I don't see any evidence that a Saturday town meeting would be any better than a Tuesday night town meeting, and I just, I think you just affect a different demographic, and quite frankly, it's the issues at town meeting that draw the people out, not, not the town meeting itself, except for those diehards that are, that are out there, in my opinion.
Is there a bylaw, or I'm just scanning the charter here, is it, we may want to look at that first, because it may be under bylaw or charter on the second Tuesday of the month?
Well, it's in, it's in there. I know that it's at the annual town.
I don't, I don't, we changed it from the third Tuesday to the second Tuesday or something a while back for budget and purposes.
Alex?
I mean, I, I think you're right that there are deterrents. I mean, you know, as a parent with small children, it's been difficult for both my wife and I to be at town meeting. I mean, we just can't do it, because, or else, you know, the children will have to go to bed at midnight, you know, which isn't very viable. And I, and I think there is somewhat of a deterrent for seniors. I mean, because I remember for fall town meeting, that was an issue. People that wanted to come out and, and voice their opinion on the casino issue, that was, you know, I think that was a deterrent. I guess I, I hadn't, I've never really thought about an alternative. I don't know, I was just wondering what your thinking was with respect to Saturday.
Any weekend day is what I'm looking at, and I know the morning, Saturday morning is difficult for some people, and Sunday morning is difficult for others. I know, as you said, some people are involved with sports, but I, I know that I've had seniors come up to me and say they can't drive at night, and it is a deterrent for them, and though we've tried to have the shuttle, it still is difficult for some people to get out, especially when we're looking at meetings that sometimes can last till 12:00, and I thought it would be something that the board might want to think about.
Maria, I, I think that, I think that Saturday is not a good day. I think there's a lot of people, for either religious reasons or, or other reasons, people go out of town, that it, it's, it's not convenient. There is no good time for everybody in town to come to a meeting. That, that's just the nature of having 15,000 residents and 11,000 voting residents, and running your town-by-town government form, town meeting form of government, and, and that's just the way it's going to be. I don't, I think to, to try to improve the, the prospects for one group, you're going to reduce the prospects for, for another group. It becomes a trade-off. I'm not sure that, that there's value in, in trying to do that.
Well, there's no way for the board, we could go ahead and go with the current setup that we have then, which would be-
Well, I'll voice my opinion, because it looks like it's going to be a 3-2 vote, but I, I'd like to see it opened up for a little more freedom for, for everyone. And I do know the seniors are being shut out pretty, pretty easily by this, by not being able to drive at night, and I don't know if they would participate if it was on Saturday. I can't say. I think the chances would be better as daylight hours, and that's, that's the only perspective right there, is it's daylight hours and possibly be easier for them to get up. But I, I agree with everybody said, there's no perfect time, but we, we have, we have pinpointed a very, very potential problem with having nighttime meetings, and that, it, it does exclude a lot of our senior citizens that have mobility issues or can't get anybody to bring them out at night. So, we, we have identified there is a given problem there that we can't, we're not solving. So, I don't know if we're going to create other problems, but I know we could correct one problem, or at least a perceived problem, with having a Saturday meeting.
Well, since there's still some discussion on the board, why don't I see if there's even availability of the gymnasium around that time for Saturday or Sunday afternoon, and then we can think about, I know I sort of dropped this on everyone, and I'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting, and we'll go ahead with a vote that day.
Can I ask a question? I, I don't disagree that some people cannot attend a nighttime meeting, but I think it's kind of dangerous when you say seniors can't come to a meeting at night.
Right.
Because I, I don't have evidence that says 60% of the senior population can't drive at night. I don't have evidence that says they can drive at night. So, I do know it affects some people. You know, I know some people don't like to drive at night.
Right.
I know some people can't, because of vision issues and so forth. But I, I think when you start to deviate from what, what's going, and again, I have, I believe it has nothing to do with the day, it has to do with what the issues are. You put an override vote at, at town meeting, you'll see people come out. You put a dead exclusion for a school building, you'll see people come out. You put on 25-warrant articles that have nothing to do, except for the budget, no one's going to show up.
Right, so what-
And I think that's Saturday afternoon or Tuesday night.
Well, and the other thing, Maria, is that, when our charter was rewritten, you know, 10 years ago, the, so, whatever, that, you know, there's now a provision that, that allows for referendum votes to reconsider town meeting articles, so, and referendum votes will ha, can happen, you know, during the daytime with everybody going to the polls. And so, the, the situation where, you know, I used to say, you know, 50 well, well-placed people could require every house in town to be pink with purple polka dots, because only 50 people show up to town meeting, isn't going to happen anymore. It was actually going to be, you know, there'd be a referendum to overturn that, and people would be able to vote at our June town meeting, and I think that's one of the issues of, of setting the date for this, because the town meeting does have to be tied a certain number of days, weeks, and whatever, before our, our town election, and I think we've got to tie those two together, and, and, in order to, to allow for the provisions by our charter.
Okay, folks in TV land, you've heard your select board members talk, you know what their phone numbers are. Tomorrow, pick up your phone or email and tell them what your feelings are, and we'll resolve this issue the way it's supposed to be, by the, by the populace.
That sounds good.
And for those of you that are very popular, your email's going to be-
R. Foster at LongMeadow.org, right?
Okay, but I'm a little concerned, do we have to go ahead and set the preliminary election ones, do we? Or we can wait until the next meeting? Okay. So, moving on, emergency sheltering MOU with the Jewish Geriatric Services, and this is a good time for me to say how really happy I was to hear that Eric Madison was with the Red Cross at the new high school, and moving forward, I'm making this an emergency shelter. That was really great. I was excited to hear that.
I agree, and I think, you know, emergency preparedness is something that Chief Madison has been a leader for this community, but also for the region, and certainly the lessons of the October 2011 storm, which I wasn't here for, but I've heard so much about it that the lessons are still fresh in people's minds, and it highlights the need to always be prepared. And the, the goal of the Red Crossing is to make the high school the primary emergency shelter in case of a town-wide emergency. This agreement codifies a relationship that has existed for some time, which is Jewish Geriatric Services being able to provide some assistance to the town and to what would be our emergency shelter for a certain special cases on a referral basis. This would not make Jewish Geriatric Services a emergency shelter where people could go. They would come to the high school in case of an emergency. This would simply give us the opportunity to work with them if we needed for certain special circumstances, largely driven by the fact that they have a generator that is sufficient to meet the, the needs of their population and can absorb some, a small amount of additional people if, if they needed to, for us. So, they have, we sent the two of them for a view, they agreed to it and included insurance, and I think it's a fantastic public-private partnership, and I want to commend Jewish Geriatric Services for their willingness to help the town.
Mark?
I move, if we, if we approve the MOUs between town and Jewish Geriatric Services.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. This is the very first time I've heard of this. Very first time that I've heard that we've had a relationship with the Jewish Geriatric Services. I didn't realize there was. During the October storm, they were providing services for residents? I mean, I know you weren't here, but I mean, that's, this is, I, I, I have a question as to why we're entering this agreement, because I haven't heard of this agreement, or this cooperation prior to this.
I think it's been in reports in, because we've been working on this for a while. I thought I had this in reports in previous-
Not that I've seen. I mean, maybe, no.
Like I said, the, the, the relationship in, in what this codifies is, predates me.
Yeah, no, that's, I haven't heard of, I, I didn't even know there was a relationship. I didn't know they helped out me in previous times where we've needed this. I, I, this is all new, and I, I don't, I'm not going to sit here and say that we haven't worked at JGS. I'm sure that there has. I just, this is the very first time that this has been brought to the board's attention, and, you know, the question I, the questions I have on it is, what's the cost of the equipment we're provided? What's the cost of the assurance? Because none of that's in here, it's not outlined in anything else we have, and while it might be a good, a good thing for, it might be a good thing on paper, is with the high school being designated as a shelter, is can those services be provided here? And this agreement's saying, no, it can't.
That's not what the agreement's saying.
Well, I mean, well, then-
It just, it just, you want to have as many options as possible at your disposal in, in an emergency, and this gives the town another option. And because of their generator and some of the other facilities that they have, they have options for providing emergency services that we may not have. We may not need in, in an emergency, but if we did, we know, we know it's there.
During the October storm, Eric was on the phone with, I believe, Jewish Geriatric, and also with Glenn Meadow, and it was, as Stephen said, it was referral basis for residents who were in special needs, and it was not felt, Eric did not feel that the local Red Cross shelter was going to be sufficient, and-
The equipment's all grant-funded, by the way. The equipment was funded through FEMA grants and no cost. In terms of adding them as additional insured, I, I don't know. On the size of our policy, probably not very much.
Any further questions in regards to this? All right, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'm going to vote against it. I just, I, I, there's no information of what the historical services are, there's no, I understand their grant. Again, I, I think this is a clear, this is an issue where we have something put in front of us for a vote, that it's just, it's just the, the agreement. There's no background information, and as I said, I've been on the board for eight years and haven't heard one time that we worked with Ju, and again, I can't dispute that, because I don't know. But is there a similar agreement with Glenn Meadow? That would be great to know, too. You know, I just, I, I just, I have a problem on voting for things when this is the very first time we're seeing it, and we get this information on a Friday.
Okay, so, it was passed four to one. Moving on to the non-property tax revenues. Several select board members have requested that we start looking at other revenue streams, and I think even when we had that joint meeting with the school committee, it was brought up, that we should have, try to look on different revenue sources, and I think a back way of looking at is, Mark, you've been talking about purchase of the electric lights and cost savings, and so, I thought we're coming up to the MMA meetings, and it would be a good time, maybe, for all of us to really go out there and try to come up with ideas, and have a special meeting in the beginning of February, where we try to brainstorm on some new revenue sources. I believe it was a year, it was a year and a half ago, we did the property tax, and I know that was a tax one, but we'll see what we can bring to the-
Mealstax.
Mealstax, that's what I was thinking of. We'll see what we can pull together. So, I sent to everybody all of the various meetings and breakout sessions at MMA, which is the Mass Mutual Association meeting that I believe all of us are going to, and if you could sort of let me know who's going to what, so we don't end up five members at one of them, and then go to some of the booths, and let's bring back some ideas at the beginning of February. So, if you could sort of let me know what dates you'd be available the first week or two in February, and I'll try to plan a special meeting where we get, and we try to do some brainstorming or workshop on that. Any other questions? Was town manager report at this time?
Just very briefly in your packet, there's two letters from Bay Path, one to the police chief, one to the fire chief. They gave us a grant of $1,500 per department for, just for them to purchase a special piece of equipment or, or professional development activity for the staff, and so, we want to thank Bay Path College for their generosity.
Okay, select board comments?
Actually, you mentioned Bay Path. We were notified by the CFO a while back that we actually have an MOU with Bay Path regarding them taking some properties off the tax rolls and them providing payments in lieu of taxes to the town. To the best of my knowledge, the last time Paul mentioned that is that agreement had not been signed and finalized, and I don't know if it has been, because there was an issue, and, well, then I think we need to bring that back up to the board for discussion, because that agreement was predicated on all of the agreement, not what Bay Path, just, just what Bay Path liked. And it's been, I think, well over two years now that that's been out there, and when we approved it as a board, we were assured that Bay Path was going to approve it. It was actually a draft agreement by the board and people at Bay Path, and we approved it, but they didn't. So, even though they made the payment in lieu of taxes, they didn't agree to what we had stipulated, or to the, the agreement that was prior to that, and I think that, quite frankly, makes the agreement null and void, and, and, you know, Bay Path continues to take properties off the tax rolls, and that agreement was to work with them on that type of thing. The other question, comment I have is, you know, Maria, I had asked for a few items to be added to the, or to be added to an agenda when we could, and I haven't had any response, and there were three items I had sent you.
Could you remind me? I don't remember.
One of them was a sign policy of about, four years ago, I worked with, we had actually, what the heck was that called, Mark? The, we had a committee, we had groups of department heads coming up with revenue sources. I can't remember the exact name of the committee, and one of the things I worked on with the park and rec director at the time was a sign policy where these would be temporary signs to where, you know, someone wanted to sponsor Little League, Park and Rec would organize it. The calculation that I have by now is we'd have about 50 grand into a fund that would use to be upgrade fields and, and things like that, and there was a, it was laid out, and it was, it was supposed to be brought back on our agendas, and it never was, and it's something that, we talk about alternative revenues.
That's awesome.
This is something that, you know, the park director was very keen on and very confident that she could do, and it's a sign policy for town, town property, and we would also look to work with the schools for the same thing in their buildings, if they would like to do that.
And that's sort of why I'm putting that meeting on, because it was one of those ideas that you bounced off me for, so that would be discussed in that meeting.
I'm going to have to go back and look at the other ones.
I think the other one was a billboard?
No.
No?
No, no billboards. I got to find it.
Yeah, the, the way of my life, you have to keep sending them to me. I'm sorry if I missed something. But anyone who has ideas like that, I'm hoping we'll, you'll flesh it out and bring it, and so that we can sort of see the, what's behind the idea and the project, and maybe we'll find a few that we can push forward.
And the other one, quite frankly, is streetlight purchase. I, I know that, you know, we have had this work done in the past, and I called the, I called the MMA, and they were supposed to get back to me with, there was a gentleman by the name of George Woodbury who presented at the MMA conference. Two years ago, George sold his company, and I guess he's a, but there's no way to get a hold of him. They never got back to me with the information about, you know, who he sold it to, this company. company. But George had laid out a plan for the town along Meadow probably about five or six years ago. We had an alternative, alternative energy task force that was set up by the town manager, and that was one of the projects. And the payback on it is, I think, three years. And that was even at a, we were at a disadvantage, because you wouldn't get credit for having LEDs in there, for example. And that's something that the utility, Department of Public Utilities is considering setting up a separate rate classification. But I think we need to really look at that. It shouldn't be dependent just on these funds for the Green Energy or Green Community Act, because if it makes sense for the town, then it should make sense for the town regardless. And it might not even qualify, I don't know if it does or doesn't, but the issue is, that's something we really, really, really should have on that, on future agendas, make sure it doesn't slip through the cracks again, because every year that we do, it's just one less year.
That's what's going to be in that February, because that was Mark's project I was thinking of. So if we find more information or new companies that we could talk to in the MMA, and I know you have stuff to bring to the table.
I did want to report and get essentially, honestly, credit for having gotten the report out, had it put in the ERP, reached out to Wamiko about what they thought the lights were worth versus what George Woodbury thought the lights were. I did ask them if they would revisit their proposal and their costing of it, and right now, I don't know if the weather will delay, but Wamiko is in the process of doing that. So, you're right, Paul, that is a, a project that should be done just on its own merits, separate from a green energy, green communities grant, but, and this is what I want to find out from the other town that used their green communities grant to do conversion. If we, it's, the purchase of the streetlights is on the order of, you know, one fifty to two fifty, two, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, according to the Woodbury report, somewhere in that RN versus there in, in that range. The conversion to LEDs could be several hundred dollars or more per light out of fifteen hundred lights. So, if you're able to take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and purchase, you know, a significant number of LEDs, then you can use the savings to continue the conversion process or pay debt services and convert them all once. And these are the questions that I need to have answered, but you're right, that that is a project that should be, something that we should be pursuing as a revenue generator, and we're doing that.
Anything else? Mark?
No, no, I just...
Oh, you're pointing, okay.
On November twelfth, we had made, there was a motion and a pass that the town manager was going to provide his evaluation to date of DPW. And I haven't heard anything about that. I mean, like, not even an acknowledgement that we had had the vote. So, I'll ask Stephen now, are you planning on doing that?
Actually, I need to respond to that because the agenda issue, and I had talked to Stephen on whether we were going to do that tonight on the agenda, and I'm thinking I might need to have a special meeting on it, because capital planning is coming up the next time, and, so that he can tell you where he is on it. But, we have talked about when is a good time to put this on the agenda, because it's the type of thing that's really going to be a whole meeting, I think, in the DPW evaluation. So, Stephen, you want to respond also?
Yeah, I just echo what Marie said, that we had talked about, when is a good time to have it merit the attention it needs, when we are distracted, but occupied with more time-sensitive matters regarding casino mitigation than other things. And I guess, I didn't, it just says, ask for my evaluation, I assume you just want a statement of my opinion of the department.
Whatever, what, I mean, my understand, and I believe this predates my time on the board, but I think it was shortly after you were hired, my understanding is that you were tasked to evaluate DPW, and so we, this passed five to zero, so everybody was interested in sort of, what is your evaluation, whatever, what sort of, what have you done to date? What is your assessment to date? So, I mean, I mean, which sort of leads me to sort of a larger issue, which is that, you know, our votes have to have effect. You know, one of the concerns I had also at that meeting, we voted to host a meeting with surrounding communities. That didn't happen, and now it's kind of a moot point. You know, we voted on September sixteenth to hire a traffic expert, that didn't happen for six weeks. So, you know, there comes a point where, you know, it goes beyond delay, and it's just not doing it. Or, you know, it kind of goes to the integrity of the board. I mean, you know, if we take a vote on something, then I think that has to have effect. And then, you know, another thing that we also voted on was for the town manager to identify the work that has been done to date relating the impacts on Long Meadow from a casino. I never saw that. So, and I know you and I had spoken about that, Stephen, but again, it just seems to me that, you know, when we take a vote, we need to have an acknowledgement that the vote took place, and then there's to be some carry-through on that. The other comment I have is about the bike lanes. I think this is the last meeting, or maybe, or a couple of meetings ago. I know Marie had something good to say about it, I did. And I guess, in order for that issue to get really teed up, I mean, somebody's got to work up a cost estimate of it, and, and so I guess my question to the town manager is, is that something that you would consider within your purview? Would that be part of the capital planning committee, or where do you think that lies?
The first step that we've initiated is, I've asked the town engineer to look at the map that was provided to us by the good people who made the presentation, and evaluate the route and the existing width of the roadways, and any applicable standards for bike lane widths that may apply. Certainly, federally, highway system roads, I believe, have certain standards you have to have, you know, if it's a local road and the state has no plug-in on it, you can stripe it or do whatever you want, for the most part. But in terms of adding a bike lane, usually the federally highway roads have standards. And I, I'm not a hundred percent certain on average, or actually know that better than me, but I'm asking the town engineer to evaluate the route on those grounds, and he is working on that. And just to be clear on timelines, he's also reviewing the draft of our MOL impact report and a lot of other more time-sensitive issues, but we are, it is on the radar screen, and we are going to evaluate the route to make sure, you know, I think everyone acknowledges that Laurel Street has the width to accept bike lanes in both directions. But a bike lane from nowhere to nowhere doesn't really, you know, bike, those types of transportation amenities, whether it's a rail trail or a bike lane or anything else, work best when they connect something to something. And don't just exist, you know, kind of two blocks and then it ends, like sidewalks as well. So, we want to make sure that as we evaluate the opportunity for bike lanes, we're not creating a, you know, a proverbial bridge to nowhere. We want to make sure we have a route that connects points of interest and points of transportation in the community. That's how, that's how transportation planning goes.
I, I think that's common sense. I mean, I think not, I hope we don't give this too much, people are already going down Laurel Street, and they're not going to nowhere, they're going somewhere.
Well, people bike all over, sure.
Yeah, so, you know, so, I mean, I think a better example of what you're talking about is maybe the Springfield rail trail. I mean, I've tried, you go running down there and there's a dead end, you know, it doesn't link to many things. I mean, I don't, I don't think you would be, I think that concern doesn't really apply to the streets of Long Meadow, so I hope...
But it's the installation of bike lanes. I mean, people do bike all over, whether it's bike lanes or not.
Right.
I do think...
So it's just making it safer.
Right, creating a, certainly, what I'm pleased with is that the debate and the presentation certainly raised public awareness about cycling in town and getting people thinking about it. I mean, I, I know you go by there all the time, and especially when the weather's nice, the bike racks at Center School are completely full of kids riding to school, and that, you know, is great for a community to be able to do that. High school, less so, the parking lot is more full than the bike racks at the high school, but I think people are coming from greater distances in town versus the neighborhood schools, but I think it's raising...
Kids just don't want to ride their bike.
Yeah. I think raising awareness of it is a great first step in terms of making both motorists and cyclists aware of concerns each other have for safety. You know, I've heard from people who drive that, you know, well, cyclists don't hear the rules of the road, and you get some of that kind of dialogue, and I think bringing it out and raising awareness is a positive step, and it just is, I just feel like, if the route that is proposed won't, simply won't fit in the road based on our obligations to the people, like, because Shaker Road by Long Meadow Country Club is an example of a road that's very narrow, and is a state highway, is a numbered road. So, will it fit there, I think, is a big question. Can we even put a bike lane there? What are our options? So understand our options, so we can say, well, if that's not a great option for us, how do we create a route that can still connect those nodes, the shopping center, and, you know, that intersection that has a lot of stuff around it, the rest of the town?
So are you saying that they're actually looking at various plans and they'll come back to us with it?
Yeah, we'll be reporting on what, on that specific route, you know, because the people presented, we will be reporting on what our options are there, and then we'll spend some time, possibly get together a committee of interested citizens to say, well, if these aren't our, if our, because they already did that and presented their recommendation, you know, we owe it to them to say, does this work, yes, no, and if it works, let's see what we can do, if it doesn't work, based on the rules.
Well, we'll be, one step at a time, we'll just see.
Yes, one step, so step one is, let's see if the route fits in the roads we have.
I mean, and I guess what I'm leading up to is, I would, I'm hoping that we'd be able to have some sort of question that could be decided at the Springtown meeting. I mean, do you see that as being part of the timeline?
I, I mean, I don't, I'm not envisioning an article, so I mean, if someone has an article in mind, should certainly bring it to the fore. But I didn't have anything in mind, when I saw the presentation, nothing struck me as, oh, that should be a town meeting article, so if there is...
Okay, but I mean, you know...
If that does become part of the timeline, we'll get on it. We'll get on the timeline.
It does what?
If, if an article gets proposed and it becomes part of the timeline, we will accommodate.
Then you would cost it out.
Well, I think the first step is just to get a report back, because this board really hasn't discussed it. Paul?
That's actually my first question, because I didn't understand, I didn't realize the board actually voted on authorizing the work on bike lanes. I missed that vote, I guess. I didn't see the, I didn't see it in the minutes, and I guess my question for you, Stephen, is that if the board didn't vote on it, you actually could do that under your own volition, is where does this fit in the priority of the needs of the town, and why is it, where does, why is that all of a sudden a priority now to look at bike paths versus the other issues that we have in town?
I think I explicitly said that it wasn't a high priority that he, that our town engineer was working on it.
But we're spending time on it.
Yeah, it's just paying some time on it.
So, so it's, so is it a priority over other things that could be addressed, because it's taken some time? And since it wasn't an authorization of the board, you're deeming that it's more important than other things that could be done?
I'm deeming that it's worth looking at in the greater context of advancing the town.
Why?
Town's interest, because I serve the, or I believe my role is to serve the needs of the community, of the town.
So, prior to this presentation, you were going to work on bike paths anyway?
No.
Okay, so this presentation was so convincing, that you now see a need for bike paths, even though we haven't had them for the history of the town?
I don't think I said that, I think what I said was...
No, what you're saying, you're working on it.
What I'm working on is, they made this proposal, how does it fit with our existing road network and the rules that apply to it? That's all I'm saying.
Well, my, again, my, my, my point comes to the fact that a group of two people came before the board, gave a slide presentation, saying we'd like to see bike paths. Two people expressed that was a great idea, I said I don't think we need them, and I think I've gotten three emails so far, which is wonderful, and I've answered them all. So, my question to you is that, from that conversation to the conversation that the board had, the board took no action, obviously, but it's now become a priority to look at over other projects, because you are, you just said, our town engineer is spending some time, but he has also all these other things that are going there before him. So, I would actually ask this question, is that a higher priority than checking whether or not all our crosswalks work? Because the issue with that young boy that was hit by a bike was a crosswalk issue and not a, not a bike lane issue, because he was in the crosswalk. So, I would actually ask that, or say that that is a higher priority than whether or not we have bike paths, because I haven't, I don't recall many people getting hit in town on bikes.
It's kind of a, it's kind of a false choice.
Well, it's not a false choice, you're making a...
Yeah, it kind of is.
You're making a determination.
You're saying, if he spends time on bike lanes, then he's not going to be able to do the, then his engineering department is not going to be able to do the crosswalk.
Actually, you know, let's go back to one of the directors of the board, and I know there was a meeting that Marie wasn't here, so Mark sent a list to you and to the chair that said, here's what the board discussed. And one of the things we asked for specifically was, there was a list given to us by, I can't think of his last name, a gentleman at town meeting, that went around town and said, these are the crosswalks that work and these are the crosswalks that don't work. And so, we had asked in that email, that very specific email that went with the board discussion to ask the town manager, does DPW have that, that same data? We haven't received a response from it. But yet, we're looking at bike paths, so I can't, we don't even know whether the data that was given to us by that gentleman is accurate, I'm assuming it is. So, we should be working on bike paths more than crosswalks, because we haven't heard anything that we're working on them. And I think Mr. Foster asked very specifically, after that boy was hit by, at the crosswalk, what other ones don't work? And I might be putting words into your mouth, Richard.
Generally speaking, that's what we did say.
And I think that's...
Mr. Foster asked if there was a schedule to check in these systems and when they were checked last, and the answer is, no, there has not in the past been a system to check them, and it's been a while since they were checked.
Okay, so, it's, so in your, in your judgment, it's more important to have the engineer work on that versus checking crosswalks, or anybody checking crosswalks?
I don't think I said that.
I think the question is, when are we going to get the answer to that, and we'll put that on the agenda?
Well, the answer, I guess my question is, the answer to what? The board didn't authorize anything, the town manager was going to...
No, I'm talking about your crosswalks. The question that was asked on the crosswalks, we'll have that on the agenda on the twentieth. All right, any other comments? Mark?
I've been sitting here listening to a bunch of comments back and forth, but I've also listened to a bunch of opportunities be mentioned, new ones and old ones. And they can be cost savings opportunities, new revenue opportunities, or maintenance opportunities, like crosswalks. And I think my conclusion is, we have more ideas and more opportunities, and they're all come under opportunities, than we have resources to do them. And it's not just financial resources, but it, to me, it comes back to also personnel resources. And I think there comes a time when we might want to take a look at, as we get going toward a budget process, of talking about new, new opportunities or new ways of doing things that say, you know, we don't have to tell our town engineer or our town this, or our town, you know, the limited number of people we have to pile stuff up and have it just get backlog. I think we need to talk about whether it's hiring people that we can justify long-term, or outsourcing getting stuff done, whether it's, you know, replacing streetlights or buying streetlights, or writing a grant for something, whatever it is. We tend to not take advantage of opportunities and let them pass by us, because we run this town so lean, we don't have the people resources to execute the projects. And I'd like to encourage our town manager to think outside of saying, if the cost of the project includes X percentages, for an outside person to take it from soup to nuts and do it, and it still is justifiable, then we pursue doing that as well, because there's just been too many opportunities that we don't pursue because of perception we have to do it ourselves, and we don't have enough people resources.
And I think that's sort of, I think that's a great idea, and we're, as I said, the special meeting, the beginning of February that I was looking at, where we sort of have a consensus among the board about which projects we really want to go for. And, because there's a lot of great ideas in the board, and from the streetlights to looking into the football timers, and I think we come out of the MMA, we'll all have even better ideas, we can flesh it out on that weekend, and then do some votes at the beginning of February. And if you need extra, some outsourcing and assistance to try to get these down the road, you let us know on that. Anything else coming up? Right now, my understanding where I'm going with this is, I will have a special meeting in the beginning of February for special revenue projects, so if everyone could send me their email on that. The other thing is that we talked about a possible special meeting on the Green Community Grant. So, let me know what your days are, not maybe next week or the week after, maybe next week. And I, well, I'll check with Stephen. So, I know certain people are available certain days and not other days, just shoot me an email what's really good for you in the next months, and then we'll try to put those things together.
I had, I had one thing that was back under the comment thing, I figured we might as well muddy the water a little bit more. And we don't get into long detail, but we, we have kind of let the DPW complex slip off our radar screen again. I'd just like to remind everybody that we need to revive that. It's out there. It's not, it's not going to go away. We have to push forward to the next decision. It's not, it's not going to go away. We, we have to push forward to the next decision-making process.
We need to find three votes on this board to go in one direction rather than the other. Because up till now, and, and that's not just this board. It goes back four years that I've been on the board. You can't get three votes to do one thing or the other, Richard. So it's not, it's not an external force on that. It's us. We got to decide something to do positively that three people agree with.
And we will have that on for the 20th. Everyone can sharpen their knives. Long meeting.
January 20?
Yes. Okay, and it looks like with the bad weather, we're going to end at a decent hour. Everyone be safe going home. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
No? Thank you. And we do have, I have a special meeting set up for Wednesday. Only if we need it, please, everyone tell me how they feel and I will let you know if we got a response from the MGC and the Attorney General's office in regards to executive session. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us.